PM. On June the eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Thomas. Dr. Little.
Present.
Trustee Lopez. Trustee Duncan Moore.
Present.
Trustee Ronald. President Calhoun.
Present.
Dr. Curry.
Here.
Approval of closed session items, can I have a motion?
I would motion to approve the closed session agenda items.
May I have a second? Do we have any discussion? Dr. Little?
No discussion.
Trustee Dr. Moore?
No discussions.
President Calhoun, no discussion. CNO discussion, please place your online vote.
I have to give my vote. But can I get the first one second again?
Dr. Duncan Moore and Dr. Little.
Dr. Little. And I'm giving my for the vote.
Yes.
You're not saying it? No, just, just let her give her vote. Advise a vote.
And a vote out?
Yes.
Am I able to say? Does, I don't see it.
But she can give it. Or you can give her vote.
I'll give it to her. Is it like if I'm not connected?
So you give a verbal?
Yeah, because it's good.
No, no, either way.
Yes.
Okay. Item three point oh one requests to address the board of trustees on closed session agenda. Do we have any request to address the board of trustees on closed session agenda?
Um, no.
Trustees, do we have any, item three point oh two. Trustees, do we have any requests for future agenda items? Dr. Little?
Not at this time.
Trustee Dr. Moore?
Yes. I will.
We go to second item?
Yes.
Okay. President Calhoun, no. No discussion. For future agenda items, that's the stuff. I will adjourn to closed session at five oh eight PM.
I hate using this.
We're going to call this meeting to order at six oh six PM.
Roll call. Two interesting comments. Dr. Little?
Present.
Trustee Lopez? Trustee Duncan Moore?
Present.
Trustee Ronald? President Calhoun?
Present.
Dr. Curry?
Here.
We're at five oh two, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. Dr. Little? May I be clear?
There we all stand, take the flag. Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance and the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it is made, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. With one day. Item six. Report of actions taken in closed session pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven point one. In closed session, the board took action to approve an agreement with the Compton College Federation of Employees Certified Union, Unit, AFT, Local thirty-four eighty-six, for the settlement of an unfair practice charge per case number LA dash CE dash six seven, six seven dash E. The roll call vote was as follows. Everybody said yes. Did I say that? Oh, Ronald was absent, sorry. And Lopez and Ronald was absent. So it was hit and go vote, so you can have it some. We are now at item seven point oh one of the book open session. Dr. Curry? Do we have any corrections or additions to the agenda?
We have one correction, item number fourteen point four eight. Item number one eight three. The last day of retirement for Dr. Abidal Asan Pagey will be effective July twelfth and birthday retirement July thirteenth, should be.
What is, what, I, what meaning for, I?
Fourteen point four eight?
Fourteen point four eight, item one eight three. July twelfth.
And I have a motion. So moved second. Moved by Dr. Little, second by trustee Dr. Moore. Do we have any discussion? Student trustee Thomas? No. Dr. Little?
No discussion.
Trustee Dr. Moore?
No discussion.
President Calhoun, no discussion. CNO discussion? Please place your online vote.
No?
No, yes. Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Trustee Nicholas, yes vote. Now, something that is so exciting. Item number eight. Vote of office. What did you write here? What did it write? How worried you like that? No, it's where it is on. I'm writing the right hand.
Okay, there you go.
So this is our second time doing this, so I'll hope you can just write it the second. It's your right to person. Again.
Never.
I
Change of the time.
Do sorrys, affirm.
Do sorrys, affirm.
That I was supporting them.
That I was supporting them.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of California.
Of the state of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign individuals.
Foreign individuals.
That would bear truth.
That I would bear truth.
Faith and allegiance.
Faith and allegiance.
The Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of California.
Of the state of California.
That I take his obligation.
I take his obligation.
Freely.
Freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose that we make.
Our purpose that we make.
And that I will, will.
And I will, will.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties.
They do.
Of course, I'm about to give.
Upon all time and assets.
You could report to me directly by you as well.
Yes. All right, and give me those votes. Thank you.
Is he the second time?
He's the second time. Item number item nine is a request to address the board of trustees on agenda and non-agenda items. Open session management pursuant to board policy two three five zero, public participation. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board of trustees on agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers have three minutes. Item number oh, shall I forget, do we have anybody that's signed up? Yes, we do. Deborah, ask you?
No mic.
No mic?
No.
I'm talking aloud. Okay, I've been addressing the board of trustees, administrators and veteran trustees over the last couple of years, enjoying their leadership. Uh, and inability to make Compton College thrive. With the increasing enrollment during its past couple of years. Now, Compton has a total enrollment of eight thousand, I'm sorry, four thousand eighty-two. That's now renewed twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. El Camino has twelve thousand seven hundred and Long Beach has fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-three. Uh, Compton graduation rate is at ten point nine seven percent. The retention rate of students who continue their studies after the first year is sixty-four percent, which is below the national average. Now, the board of trustees want to burden the taxpayers by putting on a balance a hundred million dollars. What? Two flawed surveys, one for residential housing. I believe that was twenty nineteen out of approximately six thousand over four hundred, but you were able to try to justify eighty million for a residential facility. Now, on March this, this year, board of trustees meeting, uh, eleven oh two Compton College, which we found there with this survey result. Now, I believe he said out of five hundred that he was able to contact these registered voters for the residents of Compton. How many people in Compton? About sixty-seven thousand, I think, just about. With just five hundred. That's all I have to say. For now. This is so huge, you're welcome.
Lionel Wiggins?
Hello, members of the board. Dr. Curry. Um, I really wanted to come today to say thank you to the district or VVHR of HR, Dr. Martinez, for replying to the email that was sent out um, regarding the management association and our attempts to increase communication and establish a structure whereby the management association is recognized and to possibly dispel the myths that this is my personal saga and frustration to against our, our president CEO. And that is not the case, but I think it's important um, to create extra layers of support for the institution. Um, and I think the management association can help uh, for its own calls to increase communication and support for another number of structures. Um, I do want it known that the management association had no, no interest or has it ever suggested that it is a bargaining unit? As was stated in the letter from Dr. Martinez. Um, we see ourselves as an employee organization. Um, and that is it. Um, we have interest in areas of professional development, discussing areas of salary um, to establish consensus about some areas that we deem important. But that did not make us a bargaining unit. Um, there are elements that might pertain to elements of hurt, but it is still a consensus uh, and a future MOU that we hope to establish those um, ideas and the creation of our own constitution with articles that outline um, our efforts and our interests. So.
Thank you. Thank you. Curry, no more, no more requests. Item number nine point oh two, Compton Committee and College District Board of Trustees' future agenda request. Trustees, do we have any requests? Any requests for future speaking? Student trustee Thomas? No, no. Dr. Little?
I'm just updates on my file that I need. Yeah. Changing the records on all of the bottom level.
Trustee Dr. Moore?
Not a future agenda item request, but um, Dr. if you could follow up on um, possible additional um, marketing and branding for like um, social media events. I'm sorry, for events. And when they're posted on social media, those items that did um, brand marketing, brand content. Those are the items that we're looking to best. Chair, it's all in.
Okay. I have no future agenda request. Oh, no, I know. Item ten, board of trustees meeting minutes. Minutes of the May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four board of trustees meeting, can I have a motion?
Can I make a motion? Yes. You said.
Okay, so trustee Dr. made the motion. Trustee Thomas seconded the motion. Do we have any discussions, student trustee Thomas?
Um, yes. Um, as far as today, they're not having any food in every table. Um, what was that issue, how come we didn't have any food in every table? Why was we informed um, um, after court?
Well, this is about. Some of it.
Okay, then, no.
You, you could, um, put that up. When you're, um, at the end of the, okay, but this you take those. So, no discussion. None of that. Dr. Little? Trustee Dr. Moore, no discussion. And no discussion. CNO discussion, please place your online vote.
Trustee Nicholas, yes.
Item eleven, reports from representatives and employee organization. Eleven point oh one is associate student government report.
If I add, true, true, very good.
Okay, true. Uh, eleven oh two academic senate report, but basically Dr. Benador.
Good evening, board of trustees, good evening, Dr. Curry. Uh, this is my final report, the academic senate president. Um, just a couple of things to mention, our first summer session had just begun and the number was being curried. Um, we also have a really fun training, uh, professional development of several of our faculty members, including myself, are doing next week, is an in-person four-day training, nine a to three PM on how to advertise our syllabi, uh, race, race conscious curriculum and all that fun stuff. So really, a lot of us are really looking forward to not just learning it for ourselves, but then taking it to the volunteers who may not be able to attend. And aside from that, we're just, um, you know, taking care of our summer courses. Uh, no, we have two specials, but the first one did begin, um, and then the one decided later on. And also hoping to take a little bit of time off so we can come back with even needed in the fall. I thank you for listening to me whenever I come with requests and comments and I will and urge you to continue to pay attention to the faculty issues because when we are well located, we can best serve our certain populations so that our uh, graduation rates and retention rates and success rates can continue to go up. And that concludes my report, well, in July, we'll have, um, the incoming senate president, Professor Sean Moore, who will be replacing me, so. I'll leave you in the chat. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Eleven point oh three, CCCFE certified and fully informed, Dr. David Chet. Eleven point oh four, it's CCCFE classified and fully informed. We will go down to item twelve, which is presentation. Twelve point oh one, Compton College, twenty thirty-five facilities, master of Dr. Curry. And please, and please quit that.
Yes, I, I do want to say, yeah, so that we have a couple of presentations. Um, the first one is the one that I was going to try about regarding to our content twenty thirty-five facilities, master plan. So this gives the board opportunity to find out more about the topics. We're looking at compared to the twenty twenty-four frame, like these facilities. And you have, uh, Deborah Sheffield, who is the, uh, facilities consulting, uses their architecture, who's going to be providing.
We can, I want to look for some, I'm having a question. I know. And I hope that Curry, I'm pleased to be able to share with you uh, the status of project twenty thirty-five and version for new facilities. Heather, is there a picture or?
There is not, I'll go through it.
Okay, there's a lot of.
Okay.
All right. Um, well, we'll start with the overall project goals, so, um, I had a pleasure partnering with you all to develop Compton twenty twenty-four, that's been your roadmap to the future. And, and here we are, it is twenty twenty-four, so we are updating it, it's time to do that and look as far out as twenty thirty-five. So we're updating it, we're building on the great successes in it. We're continuing to frame around completion by design, how important that is. And, uh, we continue to create a comprehensive, singular, integrated plan. So you can see all the components that are listed here. The idea is to create a family of plans that are all integrated and aligned. Uh, educations, tune equity and achievement, facilities, technology, staffing, enrollment management will be all a part of Compton twenty thirty-five. And Compton twenty thirty-five will be aligned with Vision twenty thirty, and of course, the government roadmap. This is the process and timeline that we've been following. Uh, so, uh, we started early in the semester and here what you see across the top is a five-step planning process. We began with preparation and then analysis and then creating a framework for planning. And we're in step four, the exploration phase. And there's a lot of overlap in each one of these steps, you can see we're in the beginning of the recommendations. Uh, what's most important on the slide is to see all the colored dots on the bottom, that indicates all the engagement that has taken place so far and that will continue through the planning process. Uh, we've been working primarily with the core planning team, that's our working group. Uh, but we've had open campus forums, there's been online surveys, there's been several focus group sessions. Uh, we met with council, consultative council in early April and then yesterday we did as well. And we're here, um, at June eighteenth. And it will continue, the goal is to continue through the fall in the complete comprehensive plan with all the pieces and parts uh, to be approved and brought back to you, uh, or approval again in December. So I want to share with you some highlights from the campus engagement. So, uh, I mentioned a campus forum, that was not a campus forum for anyone to come by and engage with our planning team to share ideas, your thoughts and experiences. And then we also did an online version of the same type of questions to give people choices and how to respond. And I think it's so nice on the pie chart on the right, is that seventy-eight percent of the responses were students. So this is really an opportunity to amplify the student voice. So on the next slide, we show you some of the types of questions we asked. We said, how would you describe Compton College today? And you can see the wonderful words on the left side, our students said welcoming, progressive, family oriented and evolving. But there are also some not so positive side, uh, words on the right. Under served, slow to improve, undervalued. So that's a perception and it's important. And then we jump to the next slide to say, okay, what do you want to be in twenty thirty-five? Especially related to that evolving word. And this is what we heard from the campus community. The larger the words, the more often they were stated. But definitely prioritization for inclusion, vibrant campus, uh, optimizing resources, just to get a glimpse of what people are thinking and saying. Because so much has changed since your last plan and the, uh, because you have so many off, uh, options for instructional delivery, either in person and online, you really want to tap into why people are coming to the campus. Cause that answer is really important to informing facilities planning. The main reason, as students said, they come to the campus, which is wonderful, is to access student support services. And of course, this building is wonderful that you have this building and everyone knows where to go. And then, um, for a second is attending class. But the third one, I really want to point out is that other than getting services or going to a class, many of your students are coming just to have a quiet place to focus. And so we need to make sure there's places on campus of where that could happen. And of course, support with basic needs and socialize. So on the next slide, we asked another question, we said, where's your favorite place on campus? And why? So this is what we heard, uh, on campus. People love this building, SSD, because it feels like home, feels like it's for students. There's so many resources, it's nice, clean and modern. People love your, uh, SSC, students accept their library, because there's quiet spaces. It's free printed, that's really important. And there's access for classes. And then I also want to point out, what's up? There's a lot of dots on that one where people love the family oriented nature of that building. So people like places for different reasons. So on the next slide, we asked a different type of question, we said, where on campus do you feel most represented? And why? So back to this building, SSD, people feel represented here because of the types of services they're offered proper here. The UPS and counseling, it brings everyone together. Again, the student success center because, but why? The second bullet I love is that there's lots of women in staff. That's what that person thought, it was like, yeah, I feel represented here. And then also a note about the marketplace, how important that is to your community and people that can volunteer. We have some more questions. Um, this one was, wanted to know, we call it keep change toss. Keep, what do you love about the campus? Change, what could be improved to toss, what should we get rid of? Again, asking questions, different ways to inform the planning process. So on the keep slide, on the next one, these are the topics that fell into these basic categories. People love the community welcoming feeling. They love the resources. Farmer's market, the free food, the programs, and the environment, it's really acknowledged the positive and close knit environment as a sign of belonging. So the next one, we asked what could be improved? And, uh, there's, there were several topics about connections, about communication, more inclusion, student well-being. Several have fell into the infrastructure categories, you have some wonderful new buildings, but there are also several older buildings that need to be improved. And then, uh, there was mention of some academic diversity that's part of that. And then for toss, what, what would you get rid of? Um, and people talking about getting rid of the older building. Any physical barriers that still remain, make sure they're all gone. Um, inability to provide food variety, a lot of talk about food that was in here. Uh, and now, this is facilities related, there is some comment perhaps about negative attitudes or outdated policies, again, we, we're sharing. negative attitudes or outdated policies. Again, we were sharing what we heard. And then it could be used in different parts of Compton twenty thirty five. So this one I want to highlight, we asked, what would make you spend more time on campus? You know, the more times people spend on campus, the more successful they'll be. So here again, we highlighted a few facility upgrades. More social programming. People really want to be a part of the community and have activities. More events, more access to learning, support, fostering inclusion for all. And there's a lot of other ideas here. I wanted to give you a little bit of the highlight. So we used all this information on the next slide to create into a planning framework. So this is a section on the planning framework and begins with the vision twenty thirty goals and objectives from the state. And these three goals, equity and success, equity and access, and equity in support. I'm not going to go through all those because this is important. We want to make sure these are laid. So on the next slide, we're going to build up the framework, beginning with what's most important is the vision and mission. Your vision, Compton College, will be the leading institution of student learning and success in higher education. And your mission, and we separated it to those four elements that you know. So then the next tier down is the goals and how to support the vision and the mission with an overarching goal of accelerating completion. That's overarching to everything. And on the next slide, it shows the six strategic areas of focus. So each one of these areas are a piece and a part of Compton twenty thirty five. From instructions, student equity and achievement, enrollment management, HR, technology and facilities. So all these pieces and parts are coming together. And the one that I want to highlight moving forward into the next section is the facilities planning section. So for facilities planning, here is the plan that was developed in twenty nineteen. It's part of the Compton College twenty twenty four. And the goal was to update it, build on it. And we'll jump fast forward to here we are today, twenty twenty four. And this is your existing campus. And you can see the areas that are under construction. Everyone saw that they drove onto campus. I want to highlight those areas with the red that you can, that's a little transparent. But also a lot of the smaller buildings that are in the dark red, those are your portable buildings. And the goal in twenty thirty five is that you won't have any more portable buildings, so that all the functions will move into permanent facility. So acknowledging all, everything that's going on. Uh, on the next slide, you'll see these are projects that are underway. We're going to have the wonderful student housing project just up the way in this direction. That's the yellow new construction up towards the top. Jump over to the PE complex and the new pool, which will be fantastic, state funded project, which is wonderful. And then the new visual performing arts complex. All the yellow buildings are in proposed new construction. And they're all underway, either in planning or design or construction. And then the building that's in that bright purple, blue and purple, that's admin building, which shows a renovation that's currently underway. So next, we know there's a lot of other planned renovations. So a number of other buildings just turned purple as well. And that includes the Vtech building that's planned for renovation, the T building for the child development center. A portion of the G building that will be renovated for a basic needs center. And the math science and MIS buildings. So those are buildings that have been planned for renovation for a number of years. Um, and they're part of your budget destruction plan and they're in the works. So what we want to do is look beyond that and say, okay, so that's our starting point for planning. Now, how do we think beyond that based on everything we learned from the engagement? So we created this diagram, thinking about from a student perspective, standing in the middle where that heart is and looking around and seeing all the areas where students support it, student services and academic support in those three areas, kind of like a triangle. And it's really a nice way to think about those buildings and spaces sort of hugging the core of the campus. So that's the beginning of the zoning diagram. On the next slide, then you see that surrounding that is a series of buildings that are supporting learning and working. So absolutely learning, but also knowing there's a lot of office space and other work that's happening within there. And these are just general bubble diagrams. They're not specific to every single building. And then from that, you can see the area for physical education, athletic fields and community use. There's a lot of learning that's happening out there as well and also with the different type of space. Because it includes a lot of outdoor areas. We gave it a separate color. And then up to the top on the next slide, you can see student housing zone, which is right next to your student and academic support. Then the last one that'll pop up here is operations. Facilities, maintenance, warehousing, and then also the campus police at your front. So we had a bookending campus. We also went to the campus in terms of open space and parking. So coming back to that central quad, the heart of the campus, but also acknowledging where all the parking is, but that's part of your open space. And then overlaid on that, we identified at this point in time, twenty twenty four, what we call opportunity zones, opportunity for changing and improving and addressing all of the program needs built against twenty thirty five. So it does include all the areas where the portals are and also all the planned demolition that's in the works for building C and D and Q and R. As well as the spot where the gym is currently, because when the new PE complex is constructed, the gym will be removed. But on the next one, you can see how those opportunity zones sort of tie into all these circulation paths. And then that began on the next slide to block out spaces. So we're going to build this up a little bit, sequence wise. So this is kind of our starting point. Again, you can see the yellow buildings are the new buildings, the purple are the renovation. And so what you see on the next are some planned improvements. So I mentioned the portion of building D to be renovated for basic needs. And so exciting is the location for what would be a new student. That was talked about a lot in the engagement of having student union and having it be large enough to have gatherings, food choices, space for different groups to meet associated students. And putting it in a location on the previous plan, it was sitting on top of the Q and R building, which is a little bit of a sequencing issue. Because what happens when it's under construction? In this plan, because the rest of C and D will be removed, the idea is to build it in that location as soon as those buildings are demolished. And to have it be close to this building, student services, which would be a really nice neighbor building. They're both supporting students. Then when that building is completed, then all these, the functions in Q and R can move into the new student union. And on the next slide, you'll see that that frees up space for a future instructional building. And from discussions, we understand it would be fantastic if that building were dedicated to science. We know there's an emphasis in growing those programs and it's a great location right by the campus board. The next one is under picture of all of us, but is a phase two housing. And that has always been planned from the beginning is that phase one is built in a location and in order to have space for phase two to occur. And then when it's completed, it'll be a integrated complex. And then we share a location for a permanent building to house a community clinic. And this is a current conversation, the partnership, partnership with St. Joseph's to build this facility on campus that will serve your campus population as well as serve your community. And adjacent to it, you can see there's a blue, light blue area. That's a designated parking area for that. For your community members that come onto campus to have a place to park. And then moving down to the southern part of the campus, this is a very large area that includes several improvements to the physical education, athletics and community zone, including renovation to the stadium on the west side, expansion of seating on the east side, and then continuation and building out of fields after the courticles all go away um, to build another soccer field, courts, sand volleyball. Um, there's an area that's reserved for stormwater detention, which is important. But we're also able to add a little bit more parking. So there is some parking expansion in that location as well. So the last slide is the complete plan with all those pieces and parts shown together. And these are the draft recommendations uh, for your review. If I pause here and see if there's any questions or comments. There's one more slide that talks about next steps. Probably a good place to pause in case there's any particular question. So for next steps, that was basically the last slide. That's the conclusion of the presentation. Next steps is to continue developing through the fall semester and bring it back to you all for approval when we send them.
So trustees, do we have any questions? Do trustee jobs?
Um, yes, on my comment, I love everything you guys have going. I'm pretty sure the students are going to be very happy about all the different programs and everything going on. I'm kind of lost a little bit with all of the things we're jotting down that's going to be here and there. With the new housing coming on, with the new basketball, volleyball, pool, where is there going to be more room for parking for regular students and housing students? And is there going to be like a timeframe for students to park their cars? And like, you know, how is that one to be broken down for parking with all of that going on and all the new buildings?
We have some parking expansion, but I don't have all the details of how the parking policies will work. Uh, but we have forecasted out in terms of numbers of parking that would be needed for your projected enrollment. And it is showing that that combination would work. Um, and a lot of that has to do with scheduling, um, and the use of public transportation. And also anticipating how many students are in person versus online. Because with the online option, we're seeing campuses have a little less demand for parking on certain types of things. So the details related to how and when it's going to work during the transition, all of that will follow as this plan gets developed.
And how much longer, and when you guys are possibly finished with that with this plan?
In regards to parking?
Just the overall, the whole plan overall?
So the city branch plan, the goal right now is to bring it back with the other planning options to the board with the district center this year for regular approval. Uh, regards to a parking policy, that's what we were discussing, that would have to happen with the health, parking and safety community, but also to the housing folks, we're going to talk about just that. Uh, regards to that community that's working on the the transition for housing and things that we've done. So that's what we talked about as well in that too. So what we do need to look at our parking policy, not just for the student housing, but also with the community health planning as well, make sure that we have enough spaces. And then add another dynamic to this and maybe baseball, and they're always asking for additional parking too. So we're trying to manage along, put the priorities for us to build the park, right? But also we continue to be able to provide virtual capacity for students as well, they are able to be by the public.
Yeah, thank you for the report. I have a couple of questions. Um, in terms of, we have, we show, listen. You said you have one on campus and one virtually. What was the timing of those? Because you had thirty six respondents, so so I'm wondering, what was the timing of you all going to utilize a quantitative survey to try to get additional response or anything?
I don't have the exact data from the video. It was a journey for any semester at a time. We thought we would get more responses than we did. Our response to the low numbers that you guys, of course, is that we followed up with focus groups. Those are invited focus groups to make sure that we're hearing all the voices. And that is happening through the spring. Um, and I understand it's like it's scheduling more through the summer to make sure for summer students. And then we'll continue to investigate and to make sure all the voices.
So where you guys were watching with the aggregate, I'm going to.
Yes.
I think that's important, not only to inform plan, but also as you take the plan, continue to take the plan in there publicly. Actually, we, we have a higher response rate, not that they may not be representative, but I'm saying because it's important for the purposes of support. Um, a couple of areas that in terms of what can we improve, Wi-Fi accessibility came up. And then accessibility, I'm assuming a lot more. And I'm wondering, and our friends, maybe for you, have we, do we have a campus-wide assessment uh, Wi-Fi accessibility or all, I'm assuming all new buildings?
So we have a little bit of Wi-Fi on the campus, it's a two week, so we can have a two. And then getting new building coming out onboard have Wi-Fi. I think the concerns are there's certain areas on campus where people are not able to reach it. And I don't think we can do that as people move forward. Uh, but we have been, we're new building to make sure that we have Wi-Fi connection. But also there's been some place for campus, we didn't do them to have a struggle in regards to Wi-Fi. And so we have to continue to monitor that.
And especially where we have, we live in this world, the space is the way that you all have flat about it. It's how we need to identify those zones. And so that way it's not going to be a high strata way. Plays in the game as well.
But I would add to you, it's not just about the Wi-Fi, when it gives some staff, is there poles not using the G, right? And there's certain places that might be access to that. And that could be a concern that this team, that he he'd be a part of the Wi-Fi foundation. But we, we can imagine that and we can talk to IT department and have someone come out and look at our accessibility regards to Wi-Fi and certain locations. It goes steady months, we got thirty five.
Okay, and for those buildings that won't be new, but will be upgraded, will they be really accessible with that mandatory? Art in buildings, right?
Okay, we have to go out in the division of state architecture and the utility access.
Okay. And I didn't see like a dedicated technology space. Or for example, like the esports and playoffs.
Actually, the esports, we located our first western complex. That was part of that project. Um, so as some of the, as we look at the buildings, just the, we still need to finalize a little more once we get to the point of what goes in the buildings. The only, I can say, you know that side of the sign.
That's the one next to the student union, I think.
Try to be honest.
Yeah.
Right now, I did fine. So I, I think it's important for the board trustees and also the community to be aware of the situation that we're currently in. So when you look at our campus over the last three years, through our facilities, Houston apartment, everybody wants to do our campus for this. We don't have enough space to be able to house, line, and enable our campus to deliver support. Uh, and so the student union would be having a teacher learning component for a faculty and professor development, but also a conference center that can be utilized by its community. I saw this in Chicago at Malcolm X College, where they're used every day for different community events and different conferences to be able to space and be able to bring students on campus. But at the same time, we're looking at another instructional building. If you look at our math science building, our math science building will cost a lot more than what we had buzzing to really do this right. We need to standard our science building to support our students. And it's going to be from forty to fifty, maybe even sixty million dollars to do a standard art site. Our two W will arrive with the building that we have. And it's not a renovation, we're not fixing. We have a brand new science building. That's what the recommendation made me, regards to structural living too, being a strictly science building for our campus and renovating that size building just to be a classroom building that can be able to offer some of our grammar classes and also our math instruction. But that corridor area with the student unit and also the science building is huge for our future. Because if we want to get steadily, you have to have a facility to support steadily. You cannot do what we've been doing for the last thirteen, twenty years with the current facility that we have. We try to make do with what we have instead of saying we need a brand new building to support students. And so when you look at the Pacific Master Plan, this is projected out for twenty thirty five. It was also making sure that authorities in the district are getting there. The board is training, the campus community talk around, we had an open and decent campus community. That means we would be. That means we would be seeing a lot of people who aren't facilities, but at some point we have a space for them. And so the student union is is critical, because you also have to look at the offices our student government has, right? Look at, look at the bookstore location and what that does. Look at the student labs area that we can have. It it doesn't need to stand this for our students. They need, they can search something better. And that was student union, I'm sure. And there's been a housing piece on there, connects to a basic community center. They're all connected from housing, student services, all in one corridors. And so I think where we're at now is is a vast improvement of how we can move forward. And also the health clinic on our campus, we talked about before, will be utilized for our students, but also for the community. And the goal is to have it as a twenty-four hour health care facility on our campus. Why is this important? You know, we have more students who are living on campus. And if you look at um health services or urgent care facilities, what we're the closest urgent care facility, run between hospitals, emergency, not urgent care. So really looking at obviously the master plan, I think things change into the next plan. Will will support, students will support, but also it'll make our campus more available to students.
Thank you. That that most definitely fills the question of where we're going to have innovation um on campus and in my mandate. And then also, we addressed one of my questions about community access. Um similarly about the the parking and the the use, um but also the safety in in terms of balancing that. Those are the questions I'm thinking. Those are the other one.
Um yes, just a couple. So um in terms of the survey, is there a way, Dr. Curry, to kind of do like a um to kind of do a follow-up on some of the items that were, you know, that were pointed out? And I'm really looking at um the heat change and the exhaust really, right? Um you know, in terms of like the campus improvement, because I think some of the things uh were addressed. What would be, you know, would be answered in some of the um, some of the um facility updates and what's currently in the plan. And I think that is um the improved and like things such as exhaust, right? Some of the, you know, in terms of infrastructure, I think the updated plan. And if you kind of maybe do like a follow-up, I don't know if it's like another, um like in a if it's in a standard report or maybe something that gets kind of, you know, a capital or a sure, I don't know how you would.
Or talk about to the community or to?
On the student community as well as students.
I I think for the the students, you know, to get more feedback, when we continue to look at surveys, but at the same time, we have to do surveys, right? So we send out information, we know that I need to participate. People have to participate in games and this process. So when you look at that, the timeline, uh right now, we're 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 in the big of this, trying to figure this out. But we're 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 asking for input. And I think this is another avenue today is to get input for the board trustees and also the community as well. So we continue to move our wings to get more input and also look at another survey to our constituents to get their feedback. Based off the current plan and what we're looking at. So we can say, okay, this is what we came up with, the word of the toss, as we said, that what is missing. I think that probably the best way to approach it.
A report or maybe with them, like an update to some of those.
Yeah, well, we can send that out.
Okay, um and just a, just a couple of other things too. This kind of goes back to um the parking as I was looking at it. Um I think it was kind of mentioned before, is there any um plans to maybe add? You know, like the solar, uh you know, like the covering for some of the parking structures?
No, I I think that's a question for all of us. Is to make sure we have so, looking at solar as like a part of our engine, it's just for that. I think the concern that I have is about a potential parking structure. And if we were to look at a potential parking structure, what that would cost, because that has to be a local bond budget project. And do you need a parking structure? Even if a lot of community colleagues now and they're doing most of this presentation, you can see a lot of um based off of scheduling online, in person. What services, programs are being offered. You see a lot of personalized that are being at twenty thousand campuses. So how do, how can we make sure that we have enough parking to be efficient? And what I'm concerned about, not about student housing and parking, I'm more concerned about parking for the student unit. We have things, right? And we experienced that when we had the county advisor student student there. And we had a debate for our plaza graduation, plaza graduation, sorry, uh ceremony. We're, I'm sorry, academic more students, academic more service. And we didn't have enough parking, right? So I, we have to make sure that when we have the best events on campus and the number of best events that are happening, that we have enough parking for those type of events. When you think about housing and also our students. And so that mean we have to be very mindful of what we approve events on our campus that are significantly large. But I think that has to go in plenty. But adding a parking structure and look at parking, most colleges are struggling right now with parking because of the fact of the online versus in person. And how it's possible.
And the cost of parking.
And the cost of parking.
A lot of students cannot afford, so there's some.
And we have waived parking for the last couple of years for us.
But would it be more economical? Because you, because of the cost you said and having like another, having that be part of the bond. I'm saying with with the parking that we have, that's a vibe for covered, uh covered parking, it's always kind of a problem.
Yeah, but you still have to build that structure, right? So what is the potential cost of building that structure and what is that look like, right? I I'm not saying it's it's not gonna, yeah, I'm just saying like that will have to come into a cost. But do you want to cover our current light, our current purpose, the lots with that structure? When we don't know what might happen in twenty years regards to that facility, to let's say parking lot A, right?
Yeah.
Let's say, what, let's say the future parking lot A could become another building or become a more athletic builds based off of these academies. So things could change over the next ten to thirty years.
Okay, and then just one other thing too, and I think maybe you answered this with the, um with the math and science building. But um as you mentioned at the first, at the first part, did this kind of ties into the um, does it have a national plan to twenty thirty? Is that, is that a part of what you're talking about?
Regards to science building?
Um no, I'm I'm just trying to.
So what, what we're doing with our, where we go is our S K N plan to found the student master plan, new resources. And our H B plan are all linked to twenty thirty and the mission for success, uh for our better community. And we did that in twenty twenty four, which was linked to the P D division. And so we're very mindful of that. So you look at science, for example, the science building, and you look at manufacturing, and also you look at a bio tech. Like for us, a bio, we have a bio tech facility, a bio tech building. That could be how our science building. But also, we have a motivation to develop this for technology. And that's a, that's a significant project. Right now, we have a certain number allocated, let's say ninety million dollars, plus back eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars from uh vaccine water to uh state to federal government to support it. But I think this project will not give up a ten million dollars uh to be able to support it, because those have more capital program, more school borrowing. They need more space, right? So we have to really keep through these projects for a potential bond. Because we try to meet the needs of ten thirty, and also meet the needs of our community. And even more importantly, meet the needs of our academic programs. So we're making sure all that's, that's why the the plan is data-driven. So data-driven based off of rolling, is looking at the trend in regards to different programs, is also looking out some more in this program to have a real future.
Thank you, and also speaking of sounding, thank you for that. Um looking forward to having a full hand load. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh item twelve point oh two, equitable placement, Assembly Bill seven oh five and Assembly Bill seven oh five. Third, please introduce this one.
So tonight we have Dr. Rebecca Barnes, R and D of Student Success, and Dr. Abidah Oshapation, Queen of Teneri. Through the last presentation, we're coming to the doctor. Ask a lot of questions.
Yes.
We didn't remember us at the bottom of the place, please. We didn't have a plan. I'm getting ready for it. Definitely. The legal drone giant, the only, we must be there sometimes on campus. I've got also this right here, I oversee the STEM and the data publishing services. We are here to manage, provide some project and then we will be clearly in this event in town. We'll be talking about how we have been handling this assembly of our campus. We'll talk about some students support services that we've provided for our students. And look at some data about the maths and English success rates. And then give you an idea of what we have delivered to get up for our students. And we'll end up with the master June ten or June thirty five.
Okay, so in implementing eighty seventeen oh five. Eighty seventeen oh five prohibits placing, enrolling, or recommending students into pre-transfer level courses. Our college is no longer scheduling pre-transfer classes in English. We um stopped doing that in fall of twenty twenty two. And math uh stopped doing that in fall of twenty twenty three. Compton College provides access to concurrent academic support for students in enrolled and transfer level English and math. Um and all students are placed into English one oh one. And then they are placed into um the following math classes based on their major that they need for transfer.
So we implemented the last aspect of eighty seventeen oh five, which is uh your math content. Uh according to eighty seventeen oh five, we are supposed to make sure that all students that are in any STEM program by July twenty twenty five, they are able to access a standard calculus, our math one nine. Whether with uh concurrent support or without concurrent support. We are also supposed to make available a curriculum course, especially for everybody, if you want to take it. Uh except for the newest STEM placement band. The newest STEM placement band, a group of students with I C T P E with that with two point six or lower. Those are expected, they are required to be enrolled in the curriculum support class. So helping to students through calculus pathway, we are currently developing and innovating the way preparatory course for those students who are in the newest uh placement band, that is in two point six or lower. Uh we have made math one sixty five, which is a calculus class for the business and socials, uh social sciences. And we have made it affordable so that they don't have to take any prerequisite classes before they enroll. Any student can enroll in math one sixty five. We plan to continue to provide this uh concurrent wraparound academic support for all students who are going to be getting into calculus classes. Uh for those who are needed to be able to succeed.
Okay, so for student support, um we're continuing to use our CRM advice system to provide that intervention um in real time for students and help with their student success. Um team teaching is something that we have tried in both English and math, which has two professors. Um developing resources, uh teaching and assessing a class. Uh math community of practice, so standardizing the syllabi to ensure student-centered and equity-minded design to humanize classrooms. Math and English one oh one have had refresher programs during both winter and summer. And those are led by our S S C faculty instructional specialists for both math and English. And then um just in time, math workshops, we continue to do those to support students. And then provide incentives for students that attend a certain number of just in time math workshops. And in the student success center, they provide a drop-in tutoring services for math and English, both virtually and in person. We have our in-depth embedded tutor program. So we have tutors that are strategically placed in courses to help serve students while they're in the classroom. Um and then we have Net Tutor, which is twenty-four seven, free online support for students. They can get live tutoring, they can drop off questions and get written feedback. And then we have um a whole host of student success workshops that are always advertised each semester for students to help them with their success. And then um professional development activities for English and math activity.
So here we also want to share some of the data, most recent data that we have. The guidance success rates from students who are taking math and English transfer level classes for the first time. We have data from twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, and also from twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. Uh showing the blue here is for the year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, and the red is twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. Uh with me, we'll see that in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, six hundred and eighty-two students, first-time students. And uh we had uh two hundred and seventy-seven enrolled in transfer level English. And about one third, nineteen percent of the six hundred and eighty-two were successful in transfer level English math. In twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, we had fourteen percent, one hundred and twenty-one students successful out of the eight hundred and seventy first-time students in transfer level English. And this is for math. In twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, we had six hundred and eighty-two first-time students, thirteen percent, it would be greater to ninety-one of those students of the six hundred and eighty-two are successful in transfer level math. And in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, one hundred and sixty-seven enrolled, but we have just eighty-nine percent, it's ninety, it's ten percent of the eight hundred and seventy successful in math. This list that that shows us uh some of the demographics that we have. From twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, we had one hundred and seventy-four first-time African-American students. And in twenty twenty two, we had twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, we had two hundred and point eight. Enrolled in English, transfer level English were sixty-eight in twenty twenty one, ninety-three in twenty twenty two. We had nineteen percent successful in twenty twenty one and twelve percent successful in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. In the case of math, we had just seventeen out of the one hundred and seventy-four, ten percent uh successful. And in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, thirty, which is eight percent of two hundred and forty-eight first-time students successful in their transfer level math classes. And for the uh Spanish, Spanish X students, uh in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, there were four hundred and two students. In twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, there were four hundred and seventy-three. Successful in transfer level English were nineteen of the four hundred and two. And successful in math were just sixteen-four, which is sixteen percent of the four hundred and two. And then in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, eighteen percent were successful in the transfer level English. And sixty-two, thirteen percent in transfer level math. This is actually not where we were expecting to be. But this is just for the first-time level students, and this is the most recent. We strongly believe that in next set of data, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, who was going to give us data and stuff standard what we have uh here.
Okay, so for student engagement, about fifty percent of students plan to re-enroll or retake the course when it fits better with other priorities. Um forty to forty-five percent of students who are unsuccessful reported not accessing our student um supports, even though they were aware that the college offers them. Um institutional effectiveness now forwards those students to the call center so that they can get in-reach support. And more faculty are continuing to use our early alert system, which helps us identify the students that need services before they end up dropping classes. Uh so for eighty seventeen oh five, the English plans for the next year. Our English faculty have put through curriculum a one oh one E class. This is an enhanced reading and composition. So this is going to be a five-unit class, and it combines the co-recognizes support class. Um previously, we we talked about one oh one S, that support class. This is going to put it all in one five-unit class, and this is going to be ready to be offered in fall of twenty twenty five. Uh the S S C has the workshop series each semester. These are examples of things that we've had recently. So using A I ethically and efficiently, um M L A and A P A certification are popular workshops for students. Understanding prompts and creating thesis statements. Um so we're going to, in the future, have those workshops be recorded and archived on our S S C webpage so that students can't come in person for those workshops. They can still get that information and watch them um via the web. And um we have two summer refresher sessions for students who withdrew. We really target the students who withdrew or failed in their first attempt. And um we just had one June tenth through the twelfth, so you really uh try to capture those students. I did stop by both math and English, so we did have participants in both of those, and the students had really positive feedback. So hopefully they'll be successful this summer when they retake those classes. And we're going to have another one in August for students who are attempting um for, you know, fall to retake their class and want to get that jump start before they take it again. Um and then we're going to continue to to do more with our dual enrollment students and placing some embedded tutors in classes that we know that they're struggling in with math and English to provide and more support as well.
And for math, we will continue to offer our just-in-time guaranteed math workshops. And for math, we will continue to offer our just in time guaranteed math workshops. Uh, we are currently creating math curriculum process. Uh, math nineteen C, nineteen D, and sixteen C, nineteen C would be for our one ninety class. Nineteen D for one ninety one, and then sixteen C for one sixty five. We hope this will be a variable for students to take by spring twenty twenty five. We are also looking into, uh, developing our math one hundred, which is supervised tutoring. We hope we should be able to do that by fall of twenty twenty four. We are also currently working on the zero C C math. Uh, the grid pathways, which we hope should be ready by fall of twenty twenty five, faculty members are working. Uh, putting things together, uh, for that program. We are also going to continue our familiar practice. With our faculty, math faculty. And then also keep using our embedded routines to support our students learning in the classroom. Uh, just like English, we had in June, ten to twelve, a refresher session. And also we are looking forward to having the August nineteen to twenty one session to help our students get started for the fall.
Trust is doing, you have any question? Student trustee Thomas. Um, yes, uh, first off, I'd like to add that I, I like the idea of the English one oh one, um, I thought that that was a great idea. I am a student here and I took math one fifty. Um, I wanted to be honest, it was not easy. Um, so with that being said, why did you guys change the policy, um, for the pretext? Why was the policies changed? I don't know if that's special for you, or why was the policies changed for the pretext? Yes.
In twenty seventeen, legislature passed a second bill seven oh five. That essentially, that eliminated placement testing effective for fall of twenty nineteen, so it's been in place for five years. We are no longer allowed to administer a placement test, you are only supposed to use your high school, um, GPA. Eighty seventeen oh five, which came a couple weeks ago, then. Said that we have to make sure that you're enrolled, you're not just being placed through that process to transfer level English and math, but you're actually enrolled and transferred. Which is why we eliminated the pre-transfer, which R W R, that's seven. That was by legislation.
Okay. Um, you guys stated about your math, um, workshops and incentives, how many math workshops do you have to attend in order to succeed via incentive?
For just in time workshops, it's three, three.
Thank you, um, I'm sorry, I have another question. Um, in twenty twenty three, um, there was a significant like decrease in both African American. Um, and both in the Latinos, um, how do you, how do you think that you're possibly going to change? The policies with your new system you guys put in place and it's already a decrease in both the African Americans and in the Latinos?
Can you go there as far as, I think it's worth to reflect them. Oh, one, one thing to, to address your question regards to, and, and I, and it wasn't really just. But it's just the numbers, those are taking, our, our population seems what percent of our students are Latinx, we worship African. And so that's our population, but what we're noticing that a lot of students, especially our two populations are avoiding the transfer level English and math classes as long as possible. So what needs to happen, this goes back to the previous topic they had. Regards to, um, the, how, how we place students. Is making sure that we're getting students to take transfer level English and math for their first year. And that was one of the intents of eighty seven five and also seventeen oh five, was to get more students to take their level of English and math. And that's it here, that also has to be a funding problem as well. So the key for us is getting students in those classes, do their first year, but also make sure that students take advantage of those support services.
I was just gonna say that, that how you expect them to succeed if they're probably not even able to comprehend when you're just throwing them into the wolves. For those classes.
And I will say that, like, I found. The last two semesters to go check on the students that are doing those refreshers. And like for math, for example, they're giving them the calculator in advance, you know what I'm saying? I know, I took SAT two and I'm like, you know, you need that thing, so, um, but that's, if you don't know how to use that and it's all foreign to you. Like them just feeling comfortable using that when they go into the first day of class. Uh, the students have said that it's really helpful, they feel so much more confident. So we're really excited to kind of, I mean, we have a small number, we want more students to access these things that we have because. Like even for this one, we had twelve and twelve. And, you know, I go there and I say these positive things like, oh, this is so great, I learned so much, I feel so good. But now when you look at the data, like, were you successful in your first attempt? And we need more students to be doing this and tell their friends, like, hey, go do this and maybe get this extra help before, um. Yeah, and then, and when I go in there, I tell them, like, that's why I like to go see them on the last day, you know, that they do this. Because I tell them, Kane, we want to see you in the student success center, we want you to not wait until the last minute, start getting tutoring. Put it, just make an appointment every single week, you gotta put the timing, you know? And I love to tell the students that I didn't do good in SAT for the first time, it's only because I didn't get, you know, passing grade the first time I took it. And here I am, I'm being an added doctor. So I tell them that because it's really important for them to know. That you have to, you don't let anything get in the way of you being successful, you know what I'm saying? Like, this, we know that you don't like math, you don't like SATs, but this is what you need for the, what you want to be in life, like. We're gonna get you through this and we're here to support you. So we just need more students to take advantage of the resource, you know what I'm saying? But that's. And we're really trying to do it.
And I think you supported the add to the question, it's a, it's about wolves and transport. But prior to eighty seven oh five and seventeen oh five, I still remember the data of Compton College, we had majority students who were taking four eleven below. And we had two hundred students who were taking four eleven below. Of the majority, only four got made to transfer level one two mathematics, of that four only one passed. Regardless, we look at this right now, even the numbers, we're going better now in order to inform the students, particularly black and brown students. Throughout the state, we're being stuck in below transfer level English and math. And we're never making the transfer level. And so for us, for eighty seven oh five and seventeen oh five, I think we've done a really good job of creating structures. Now it's about getting more students to participate within the program services that we have.
I think that's the word, we need more to participate. If you look at our statement on student enrollment. Students are saying, okay, I will attend class if you think that I'm. If you do your priority, not like in the field century, you have to make it a priority to attend to these classes as early as possible so that we can succeed. I'd like yours to stop here.
Dr. Thurlow? Yes, um, thank you again for this important, like, interesting, your questions. In terms of the success rates, because that was also a question I have. Um, we know that math in particular, but even in, they're, they're building blocks. And. You don't get the foundation, it's hard to move to catch up. And I don't know with the tutoring. Sessions, how they are set up, because we don't have any longer loads. Free recs or those lower level classes, which we understand, but you think some people just not go graduate, say, they're going to finish the year's cut. There is a reality about learning math, it's a building block. Addition teaches multiplication. And if you don't have that foundation. I have, I have two children. Twenty five, and I'm telling you, they can be brilliant, but if you don't have that foundation, I don't know. And we know what people can, so I'm just wondering the content. Of the support curriculum, because you can help people almost memorize formulas. It won't be sustained, even with the calculator, right? Because realistically, you should be able to do the project, that, that, uh. Do the, not the equation, but a formula problem without the calculators, just to assist you. But if they logically don't know how to do it, then that's a problem. So I would really love for us to think about or maybe. Share with us in a future meeting what that looks like, so that more students can see that it is something they can do. Because I think the fear is real, and then when we see people who say forty to forty five percent that they knew of the support services, but they utilize them. I don't know, it may be good to figure that out, and then this culture of tutoring. Thank you so much for sharing your own personal story. Because I think a lot of people still have this perception that tutoring is failure or weakness. And I don't know if we can maybe do a campaign with Dr. Curry. On campus about the power of community, the power of support for all subjects. Especially for English and transfer math. Because people then tend to lower their, their, uh, fear and their, their defensiveness. And, and see maybe the incentive, like, you know, some kind of way you should do that, thank you.
I can just share, we, we, I just talked earlier with our coordinator and student professor, but we're. Trying to collaborate with like Mesa and our library to do like an actual open house, I've always wanted to do that since I started working here. But just to really promote like those academic supports at the very beginning of the school year and us all working together to. Just make them come in the building and meet the tutors and just have something really cool that we can do the, you know, each semester. Um, to, to break that stigma, you said.
Yeah, I think, I think, I'm sorry, well, last comment, because when you talk about your high school math. Especially we have quote unquote non-traditional, I think every student is traditional. But again, some people are eight years out of high school, twenty years out of high school, so even if the tutoring gives me go back. I was at math major starting in college until math and have none. It was like, you can feel confident, but then I had to go back, like you said. Foundation, and I think both imparting that this is just one. Path and, and just one block, don't let that be the bear, but to your point, getting people in there and letting them see you're not alone. Most people have these challenges, but if you don't back to the foundation, it's gonna be different.
Thank you, but the new one, I told us, how do we, we are trying to address now. Our DIY workshops, we, I guess, all different topics in math, this is not just for particular area. Maximizing as early as possible for students to participate. I think where we are, where we are struggling to get them into those sessions. We need to find a way to get them in the sessions so that we can participate, we can learn. Um. Our team teaching has also been. Really, we have two instructors in the classroom, one is teaching, the other one is supporting the students. We are doing so many things to make sure that students, you know, take advantage of all the resources that we have, we have. But I don't think they are all taking advantage of it, we can get there too, you know? Like you said, destigmatized, you know, taking those resources.
No, I want to make sure that it's a math. That's, but sometimes it's this, but, but thank you. No further questions. So trust, yes.
Thank you, this is.
I might want to let him go.
This is, um, uh, very important in like, uh, the student trustee said about her experience with Dr. Little. Um, these are, you know, these are foundational, there are some of those blocks that you. It's, you know, it's part of the, it's part of the roadmap, it's part of the journey, right? You can't escape it. So what I'm thinking, since we can't have, um. Um, you know, you know, since we cannot, we can't make people take the foundational classes. Um, if you were to do like a personal check, a personal assessment as to where you are. Is there a way that we can create maybe videos? Modules that can be placed in. Uh, like say in Canva or maybe in some other. Um, you know, like where our students are, right? So if you, if you know that you have to take one fifty. Some of the things are the topics that are going to be discussed in math one fifty. And, you know, say I can watch those modules, I can Google or maybe do like a. Something like a Khan Academy, like the Compton version, Khan Academy. To kind of on my own, because now I'm not paying, I don't have to pay for that class. Where can I provide something where I can kind of. Prep myself for math one fifty? So now, when I'm going into utilizing the services, because now I'm registered in the class. I don't necessarily feel, because I, I can talk to you, but if I'm. You know, if you don't understand German or you don't understand, then. I'm utilizing the support services, but I'm still not understanding what's going on there.
Yeah, we, we have a lot of that, most of us, faculty members have developed their own videos.
Yes.
That are posted on Canvas, uh, for the students to look up, to view, most of them post their lectures after the class. And actually, we've had a project where math faculty members actually work together. To develop specifically for a couple of classes, especially math one fifteen. And there, we develop videos, develop their live games, like, so that can access. Like I said, including a lot of this.
Yeah, but where will we find them?
Yeah, on, on, in the classes, if you.
I know what I'm saying, yeah, I'm saying, okay. I'm, I'm, I'm registered for one fifty. That's all I'm registered for. So the prep to make sure that I'm successful. Besides coming and, and I will utilize the resources. But I'm just saying, so in order to prep, then I knew I had to take one fifty. So I could have been watching some of those videos to kind of familiarize myself with some of the content that's going to be covered in a class. So that's kind of like the example. Okay, okay, so with the YouTube, got it? Okay, okay, study. You know what, I'm not gonna, I'm not. And, and then my last thing that I wanted to say, in addition to like the modules and stuff. And then are the, um, the, like the chief, like the instructors or professors. Like with office hours making themselves available to kind of, you know, we have all, we have all those things in place as well. So in, as we are going through, they can also reach the, the instructors, the professors are readily available. And coupled with the resources. And then for next time, not this time. If we could, uh, the students that in addition to. The students giving us the percentages of the students that were successful. If you could maybe add, like with those students that were successful in math and English. To do a comparison to show, like, those students that were successful, how many times did they actually use the resources? What additional twos that they used to be successful versus those that did not? And then that can kind of be a, you know, a motivator to the students that are, say, struggling. I know that it's there, it's available, but if I would have. Utilized them a little bit more, now I would be a little bit successful because that's what the data is showing.
We had a future gender request. Well, 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 no, you're act, no, no, I'm asking a question because you're asking them to do something. And that just, just my opinion, it sounds like a future agenda request. For Dr. Curry to, to put all the things that I want to do at the end time, I'm just asking.
It's, is it, is it easy to get that data and put it in as an enhancement?
No, I, I think, I think it's a future gender player, and I do stand, we can follow that up. Regardless of, because I think it's bigger than certain platforms, it goes back to one of the workings that we have on campus. It's highly incentivized, it's inexperienced, and what that looks like. And so it's not just about one particular program or internet that's supported. It's about, as in campus, how do we incentivize students, how do we more specifically participate? So I think we had a lot of data, right? But the question would be, was the, how did data to actually, not just in one area, but campus wide? And I think that is the place to put the board, and the code also can work in the other, move the work on that. Is to really try to figure out how to be incentivized to be experienced.
The one that we have been looking to monitor, the DIY workshops. The nature, the data, and see, if I have that, if I was that successful, if I attended five times. I think if I can give off that data, I'm ready to workshop. That's the only one we have to do.
Okay, that's all.
So just two things. Uh, thank you, three things, thank you for the presentation, it's very good. And I hope we, um, do that idea that you were talking about, about at the very beginning. And adding something and just not doing it one time. And the third thing is I pray that as the math one. Oh my God, oh my God, oh my God, even the calculators. You know, you give us a freaking out, right? And I put so many periods in that, then I didn't know, you put that dog on the end of it, man. I mean, that math one. I mean, that math one fifty will get you going. Either up or down, but if I didn't have it, I know I have to take it again, but Lord have mercy. I'm just saying, that was one tough class. And I cried a couple of times. I couldn't get that period to move. And then somebody said, oh, you put it in the wrong place when I, when I showed. A student, he said, oh, you just put it in the wrong place. A lot of questions, I had to ask that question way earlier, so. If I didn't practice math one fifty, I would be taken in the deal, but thank you for that.
May I just make one other? I will say, for, um, inter-independence registrations, you're trying to adjust your, your schedule and your classes. I will say that, um, the professors, the counselors, they are also very so again, kind of going back to the students, right, advocating for themselves. So questions that were asked, questions that were asked, they were answered and directed into the appropriate to the appropriate resources, and they were there to help, um, for students to be placed in the correct classes. So thank you.
Yeah, we need to, we don't have the movement, this meeting aside. Our next one is twelve one oh three, common college basic needs and success. Dr. Curry, can you please introduce this item to the public?
So, but there was my presentation, basic needs. Great, good morning, Captain Rusty. So, so proud of anyone. Uh, today we're gonna talk about basically, uh, what we did this year and kind of look back at some of our data from last year. Uh, unfortunately, the data was going pretty far in the ready yet, so we're gonna look at twenty two. Um, as you see the table of contents right there, we're gonna go over just our services, our addressing food and security. Uh, housing, security, our technology, distribution, metro passes, what's next? Next slide. So just food and security on campus, I know you've all been for the farmers market and seen what we do. So, uh, this year was four hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we are giving, uh, for base, um, for the farmers market. So this was in combination with some basic needs funds as well, also is some funds that Curry's only put aside. Basic needs. Uh, average weekly attendance at the farmers market, five hundred and ninety. So it tells you how much we're in America, five, nine times. Dr. Page, you wanna do that real quick? Weekly, uh, and average, uh, week, this is something we have now, so seven hundred and seven dollars weekly E T. So what you guys remember is that is matched as well. So with the times that my two was married before she had. So we're using our E T, that's what helped with the money raised, being, being at the farmers market, uh, doing calibrations and stuff without protections. And, uh, so that's there. Uh, most popular vendors, as I thought you wanna know, Taco Landia and the Angelo Ranch, both, right, by each other, the Angelo Ranch is one. Who is the, uh, is the fruit vendor from in, uh, General Tino Dog, I'm seeing. And then Taco Landia is right next to, so those, that's our favorite, uh, farmer and our favorite vendor. And then I just have some quotes from some of our students on there, what they said about the farmers market. Which you can read, uh, Paul, great, also one of our business, who brings peace, eleven. And then, uh, I'm going to tell you, it's more, it's positive, so everybody knows. Next slide. Uh, our pantry. So our pantry, we relocated with the help of Mr. Ruben James. Uh, out the multipurpose room into the student lounge. Uh, for now, this is still temporary. Uh, we are open from nine to twelve, then one to four thirty as well. And you see we have seventeen hundred ten listed in the pantry this year, four hundred and thirty one indicated. Uh, our partnership with company this year, all it says is going very well. We worked with Jean, who's, we're sort of copying, uh, grocery, he delivers the stuff to us and lets us go in and go shopping. Snack items, give us things on discount as well. Uh, Dr. Oletos Williams also supports staff in that with our college coach program. So we're able to work with, uh, everybody in the campus. All right, now I will call Dr. Admendingo, Dr. Now Oletos Williams, to come and talk about housing security on campus. She has personally, uh, taken this, uh, role on herself. As when some of our partnerships weren't working out as well, she said, hey, Liddell, I got as many contacts as they do, so let me go ahead and do this.
Congratulations.
Uh, Dr. Curry, it is not as impossible without you. Thank you. Okay, so how the contest? Uh, housing insecurity is just a huge problem on college campuses, we found it of what can we, uh, be going to. Uh, it's, it's marked as an extreme inequality according to the state. Uh, published in twenty nineteen, nineteen percent of California community, the college students had a clean, got a tackle home with this. Uh, what they call it, and so what we did as a college was the, uh, common college student equity plan from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty five. Provided, uh, resource of how to combat that. So over seven hundred people indicated that they would like to speak with someone regarding their housing needs. Uh, for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four year. So what we ended up doing in our department was we engaged deals, referrals to uh, safe parking, shelters, Francis no housing and low income housing. Again, this very quickly, safe parking is not just a parking lot, you know, you don't just go around and park in the back. Instead, safe parking is a regulated zone that you have access to facility. And, uh, we all went to LA, we all seem like, it's just a high number. We act, now, like to get in those, uh, things that we are fighting as, uh, you know, us calling our students to make sure that they have a spot for that, for safe parking, shelters, Francis no, sober living and low income. And we provided state and consistent shelter for over fifty four students. Yeah, I want to say this because someone said that, uh, I need to mention it. A lot of times we provide the first student get them, and once you get them, you don't come back. I actually just found out today, when I called Sean, saying hi, I need someone helping, they told me I had fifteen students in their shelters. You're getting so happy, right? So I'm really happy with that. So the number, uh, is a little bit high, but we'll pursue fifty four for consistent housing, not a one day, consistent housing, which is great. Uh, we do prioritize, uh, D V and I P V. D V is domestic violence. I P V is intimate partner violence. Unfortunately, we do have a lot of students who are victims of this. So we're able to set in different referrals, uh, for places specifically dealing with that. And unfortunately, a lot of them do have, uh, do have children. And we also have a connection, because sometimes Mel students, they don't understand, oh, you know, I'm a victim of B V. We actually have connections that goes with, uh, Mel, D V and I P V. So that's, I'm really happy about that. We refer students to housing rents, and in total, they received sixty three thousand dollars. Uh, paid directly to their housing. So what that looks like is that, uh, we, uh, gave we refer students and they got first month, because a lot of times, if that first one, if that we posit, you're right, it is never gonna get seventeen thousand. So we were able to make those connections so that students, essentially, all they have to do aside. Uh, sixty three thousand, we calculated it, and then we created a network of Francis no and low income public to advocate for students who don't need that, who is only, a lot of our students have low credit. So now, when they need to, not only do they get a referral to Eric Clay, who does credit council on campus, but I also refer them to, uh, different places that overlook the low credit. I say, I overlook the fact that your Eric Clay is higher than my credit score, you know, overlook that those things. Uh, overlooking the fact that not all of them.
I live in A O five.
Uh, network so that we can refer students to, uh, apartment complexes that overlook low credit. That overlook expenses, so twenty two and every half two digits. Uh, a lot of people, uh, their, uh, what they call it, parents might have put something in their name and it married them on. So that really does not, uh, help set them up. And then, um, we provide friendship, coffee and computer services because a lot of their housing now, it's like a kind of, yeah, you need like, you know, uh, I D, bird certificates for children, you need to fill out these forms. We provide, uh, uh, we provide all of that for students to make a coming. They can sit down in a fireplace, fill out that application, make copies of whatever they need, and then sit down. And I want to hand it back to my.
And, and one of the things that, uh, I think Dr. Williams, but I say, one of the issues we have with housing, the students come to, come to us late. Like, like they come, we don't know how to say come to us sooner, you can't, come, I'm being a victim tomorrow, it's like, what do you want?
Tomorrow, I think they'll last for.
Or last week. So we gotta figure out a way to get students to come, to students. So you can provide resources, you know, before you get that eviction. Um, uh, going to our technological data, so, uh, process, there was seven hundred applications dispersed technological equipment for all our laptops. A big shout out to the I T department, if you didn't know, the I T department gets all of that together for, so if you see Eduardo or Christian or Dan or Dan, uh, in, in there, they help get all that to listen to students. And, um, we also just started wrapping up the law program with the help of Dr. Blanchon. And we, so anybody take the statistics or book and come along and wrap it up, they're producing all of this now. We, we had so many of their students, uh, access that, uh, this year as well, that's free. And we've also worked with the math department, so now they know they can house in their class. Um, and there was any professor, lessons such as.
True.
Yes, like, um, she brought her whole class over. Uh, so, uh, check it out, so that was great, yes. Uh, our Metro Go Pass, we finally will get some information from Metro, uh, for this year. So we have three hundred and eighty five registered writers, forty five thousand dollars worth of prize. Uh, for our Metro Go Pass program, just so you know, we pay, uh, way less than that for this. Um, and then our highest retro usage you see was the Metro, a beauty one thousand, and the longest transit, that's dollars. Just going into, uh, what, what we're doing and how our basic needs services are reaching our goals. You say our institutional standard is success at sixty three percent, uh, which is kind of our baseline, and then our goal is seventy four percent. Um, as you can see by looking at the data, again, boom, for some reason, it's the biggest contributor. To, um, getting our institutional set goal, and, and it went up, went down two percent, but, you know, it's still up there, and we don't know why. Uh, as my colleague Hawk says, that the data tells us what, but not why. And I've talked to some other people in the States, some of them who practice basic needs, and said, hey, are you guys doing any data on this? So how your services are affecting the students, how's it come to outcomes and success, and they're like, no. So, um, it would be really great if we had, you know, a really, like some outside, or I'm gonna do a really deep dive. And so how we're spending our funds and deserving basic needs and how that's supporting the students. Because, uh, my, my theory is the same as last year, I think if they're coming to get moved and on campus, connect with the resources, I think that could be the reason, but we don't know, so we really need to find that out. Uh, next slide, these are just breaking down kind of what you see, you wanna pay attention to the red, basically. And then, uh, the red line is our, uh, institutional, so, Amari, help me out.
That's the set standard.
Set standard, thank you, and brings institutional set goal, so this is for technology. Uh, the one on the left is twenty one, twenty two, uh, twenty two, twenty three, next slide. And you can see this one is sort of boom, so you can see we get closer to getting that institutional set goal. Next slide. And this is for transportation, this is just this year, uh, we don't have data, I'm sorry, this is twenty two, twenty three, we don't have data, uh, before that. All right, and then, uh, there's some demographic information on our basic needs services that we're able to get for twenty two, twenty three. So, um, said, let's see for ourselves, Mars is accessing. And then what's next, so twenty four, twenty five. So, uh, we always want to increase all our services and let more students know about it. Uh, we're always looking for ways to upgrade our processes, things are faster, uh, to students. Um, the basic needs center, so where, when, once everybody moves out of back into administration during, with Dr. Curry currently is, we're kind of turning into a basic needs center, hopefully. And there is one set aside for that, uh, that basically is fun to kind of move our food pantry and also some services that come. We're basically like housing will bring a community closer to. Um, uh, we always see the vision of housing support services for students. Um, we weren't able to finalize a partnership with C S U D H, we have a kind of, this came from the conference of important. So there were, said that, uh, the Megas had a bunch of dorms that weren't used. And so we were able to kind of talk with their housing and find out one in the street. And find out how can we partner with them, so some of our students that need housing can, and that maybe attending C S U D H to our building or you know, are gonna be there, can they live with it? So we're indecisive about that, I think we're finally ready to get an M O U started with it, which I'll have to work with, uh, Dr. Harrison, if he has a background. And Red's life, and then I have to ask Dr. Hur, Curry and Ethan Jones, like, hey, this is all. So hopefully we can develop that next year as well. Uh, barbershop project, uh, our, uh, this is, uh, our company. Uh, basically, Dr. Curry had the idea of creating space when people, communities, the community come together and, um, talk about, uh, everything going on, school and also provide a service for students. So we're gonna start looking into that, uh, we hosted a basic needs fair this year, so part two is coming up in the fall. And a pop-up clothing closet, we've been talking about, uh, having a clothing closet on campus, I was able to find somebody that actually does pop-up clothing closets. So I'm looking to have them come to campus on July during farmers market, and they just pop up and it's three tall students. Uh, they can select what they wanna do, so I wanna know how to partner with this process. And I think that is all, so if you have any questions for myself or Dr. Williams.
You guys are doing wonderful things, um, I appreciate you, I, I will turn a hand with you guys both. I'm pretty sure there are some students appreciate you guys as well. Um, I have a laptop, um, I utilize you guys, so thank you so much. As far as your, your presentation, um, the company, the pop-up clothing closet, I'm, I'm really excited about that because I've been wanting to start a company closet here as well, um. So all I'm gonna say is if you need any help, uh, let me know, I would like to be, I'll hand some data. That's all I can say. Great job.
Yes, thank you again for the presentation, and just a quick question about it really combines with the last presentation I'm doing. Where do you all, at the beginning of the semester, as students, know about these various services?
So, uh, we can talk about, we have a resource in our branding, Sky. Uh, so the, uh, the upcoming energy president, uh, Sky Zarell, who, when they come in for a laptop, you may have thought you came in for a laptop, but you were gonna get a rundown of all the services. Uh, when they meet with someone to discuss, like either a foodie, meat or a housing, we also make sure that we go over. Um, and we say, uh, we so that they apply for financially, that they know about the advantages of all the food resources. Someone might know about every table, and might not know about the farmers market, making sure they know about that. They might not know about the mobile food drive that we have every second Tuesday. Making sure they know about that, uh, also for academics, we make sure that they know about all the resources. Uh, for all, whether, uh, they see they're online, they don't come on campus, or you know what, through online academic support, you don't need to travel here. Uh, we have a manual tiers, uh, and there's different types for one for every type of learning ability. So we always make sure if they come in for service for one bill, they need with ten.
It's just a follow up on that, and, and we can, um, run those way. But if we can think about, I don't know, we have a resource there at the beginning of a semester, because not everybody hits every table.
Right.
So whether it's the tutoring coupled with the basic needs, I don't know how we make that man.
that mandated exposure for every student, um, especially those two areas, because.
I was gonna say, uh, we also, I just, Dr. Spencer, we do, we work second year, our student orientation, so we rate it all of the resources there. A lot of times, a lot of times students get to us there, and once you walk through this building, you've got pretty much all the resources, because there's always soft hand off in this building, where, you know, we connect into other things. Uh, old school, we have a bulletin board too, in our, in our office, one side is housing, the other side is everything that's going on campus, so students also look at that and take part into it all, just.
It would be good to instead of the percentage of students who are actually accessing, I think, talk to you here, that was my other question in terms of, what is the percentage of students accessing the resources? Again, future, not to answer now, how do we compare, do we have comparative analysis to other campuses, we provide basic needs? And then my final point for later is the cost at the farmer's market, are we keeping this cost down? For the vendor's cost.
We also have walk-throughs as well after the beginning, and that's also what all of the services do, and so it is decentralized, it's not a certain amount of tables, you can get a pretty much, so they do attend by different tables to get information as well, as kind of, uh, every semester.
So welcome with orientation, welcome with orientation, what are some of the tough , tough points opportunities?
Uh, for everything?
Um, to, uh, to promote.
But I, I think it's, for, I just wanted to, I want to go back to previous presentation, we did, we provided more later updates regarding how to promote the program's services, kind of, essentially, you know, the college, it's not just one way, you know, confidence, we 're doing a positive, right, we're doing email, we're doing text messages, we have a candy shell set up for new announcements, uh, Fidel was set up where you did the, um, the basic needs fair, I do teach more at the cafeteria, who we are in offerings and services. So let us go back and have a conversation, and bring back the update, show of confidence of how you want to promote these activities, and also what is, is how can we incentivize this to go? It's not just, it's not just, because the, the tutoring is a part of this as well, right? So we just got to, we'll come back, and that's the topic most probably kind of figure out, but I think we're ahead of people for this company.
Yeah.
Especially with the losing experience with the water pool a couple of months ago, regardless of how you start tracking some data.
And I think telling the story more publicly, more often, is very important, because we get a lot of hits about what people perceive that the campus is not doing, and I think that this needs to be a consistent message, not that we have to prove anything, but I think we need to tell our story and our truth about the impact that would have. We don't, we don't.
Okay, right now, I think it's just bad to, is remember that, I hear our students are, are biggest advocates about this, especially regards to basic needs and cafeteria, and also the farmer's market, people are telling other people about those services. Uh, the key to this is continue to maintain those services.
Right.
I'm a firm believer, once you start something, you can't stop it. And so the cafeteria and farmer's market, and, you know, budget state revenues, and we continue to provide their services, which I'm telling about students about the service. And so when students arrive at our campus, they want to be able to participate in services, there's somebody else talking about it. So our goal is promoting those services as well. The question is, how can you utilize those services to promote other program services we have available on campus? And I think we have, we have, we have the carrot to get people to engage, now we have to double down on these efforts to ensure that, okay, what we do in the cafeteria, promote other program services, not just, not just through Cal Press staff, is there assigned people for Cal Press, maybe the student success center is going to sign up for tutoring at the cafeteria, and also at the farmer's market. You got to make those resources, you got to do spaces to improve, to participate in other program services, so we don't interrupt it, right? So before you get your meal voucher, or your, or your competent bucks, you need to go to this table and get this information. And I think that's where we're headed over the next year, that's why I think we need to provide you the board better with the strategy.
And Dr. Curry just to add on that, people do take, like, at the farmer's market, so other programs do take, like, farmers' markets, we say, we get a lot of students there, or sometimes they'll just say, hey, can you hand out this flyer to everybody, this, you know, that they're vouchers, and that's, so people are taking advantage of that.
Thank you. You know, so. Uh, I'm going to calculate the time.
There, there, end up, before, and I really do like this, thank you, well. Uh, do you know Betty Randall, chairman of Karen?
She's not in that one, she's in that part.
He's a, he's a, she's a good contact. Uh, she owns families and find places for, to be, to champion to cheer up here. And I know you were talking about the metro, first, that's the same, the trains and all like that. Uh, Janice Hahn, they told that board, and so have, made her Karen more vast. I know they're both personally, but I don't wish y'all everyday working stuff, but Janice Hahn, she loves the community of common, because she used to be our, um, the, the accomplishments, so you can get in touch with, uh, Janice Hahn, even though Maxine Waters is, one of, is what Janice Hahn sits on that board of all the, you can make a connection with them, they might even make sure you do better.
The, the biggest thing we have, we need with Metro, that the past is not working on the campus.
On the way to, on the way to, that's not a, that's right.
Now, like, the city needs to add, yeah, they never took that.
On the metro and the long beach, everything else, they got it.
Real, but the Renaissance plus, it got it. And so is that, and we, how much I think they have, the Renaissance, yeah. You know, we have, I go nowhere, I'm sorry. Thank you so much for really supporting them. And that would be very comforting.
So, I have thirty-one zero, thirty-one zero one is the predation of the budget for comfortably done, and the board touches, you see the predation, we got to ask you to go quick to all the predation, and we can move it at X time and it's using the, the conference.
Thank you, Dr. Curry, for just being, I guess that's a very difficult, eh, strong one. I'm gonna do my best, not as exciting, but, but, but the good part about it is that, even talking about the budget, yeah, so, sorry, practice, you go ahead, Dr. No, put the, part of it.
Yeah, sorry, distracted to the wrong one.
Again, as Dr. Curry said, you, you've seen this, uh, so the part of the budget, as we can do the budget, we build the graduate room every month for that, uh, the information to you, not only presented to you, but we present it to the planning and budget committee, and we also present it to the, this is the council. So, uh, so we're going to start with term and budget assumptions, um, talk about the unrestricted budget and other funds budget and the answer to any questions you may have. Uh, in the assumptions, there were just three differences that compared to what you saw in April when we had the budget workshop. The beginning balance is slightly higher, because there was some interest income that was added to it. Uh, colon is at one point oh seven when I presented to you earlier, last time it was point seven six, that's what the health group, uh, it was January of that invasion, and then it made revise, it came at one point seven, uh, one point zero seven, and just as a reminder, the legislature will be taking action on the budget, so we'll be number three change again. And then the Cal first, we had it at twenty-seven, one, seven, five, now it's twenty-seven, two, three, five. The remainder of the assumptions remain the same, next, please. Uh, again, you know, five tackle positions that we are proposing on this budget, next slide please. The one-time mutations, uh, line of credit, you remember you approved the, uh, that's that amount of seven eighty-one thousand, you approved the over two million dollars, please. Uh, reserves for the resource planning and for the personal information, right? Transfers to the proper, uh, availability, child development, some capital outlay, and we need, as you know, the cost of construction is going up, and so we need to support those projects, next slide please. Uh, this is all numerical, and you had it on in your presentation, the starting, you know, the beginning fund balance, all the revenues, expenses, and then you can see the ending fund balance is about the same seventy million dollars in the unrestricted general fund, next slide please. This is a similar fashion, the beginning fund balance, revenues, expenses, and the ending fund balance in the restricted, uh, restricted funds, uh, next slide please. We got the bond fund, the series, and you can start seeing that we're probably spending all those funds down, but the, but in the year, and again, when we come back to the final budget in September, you see these numbers change, slide please. Financial aid, uh, over ten million dollars in financial aid, uh, and so we have the beginning fund balance, which is only two, and then the balance is the same, but next slide please, after the glad to this, and trust me, woman.
No.
Dr. Little, no questions.
No questions.
Thank you, Dr. Little.
Um, thank you, nothing else, I have any questions?
I have no questions. Now we're going to thirteen oh two, adopt another twenty, twenty-four through twenty-twenty-five common community college district tentative budget.
I make a motion to, cool. One second.
Motion by Dr. Little, second by trustee Doppleborn. Is there any discussion?
Dr. Little, no discussion.
Trustee Doppleborn?
No discussion.
No discussion for myself. Thirteen oh three, common community college district resolution number oh six dash eighteen dash twenty-twenty-four A to establish dam, is that dam, dam limit fiscal year twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five. A motion.
I'm moved.
One second. And, Dr. Little is second by trustee Doppleborn, is there any discussion?
No discussion. No discussion.
No discussion for myself, place your online vote.
Motion carries.
Thirteen oh four, administrative services, common community college district resolution number zero six dash eighteen dash twenty-twenty-four B, declaration indefinite salaries for paid resolution for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, may I have a motion?
Two, second.
Motion by Dr. Little, second by trustee Doppleborn, is there any discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion.
No discussion, place your online vote.
Motion carries.
We are at item fourteen, which is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So do you?
Did, but Dr. Curry.
I'm sorry.
Dr. Curry, you have something you want to say about?
Yeah, I have, I have a correction, I can pull one item, in the HR section, item number one E, uh, the athletic coach, Frank McGannis, McNis, uh, I will pull that item further. Item one E. Item one E, number two, it has the, the temporary provisionals, I'm pulling one item, and it's Frank M R D A K, Matt McNis.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So do.
We have a second.
Second.
Trustee, do you have any items to discuss? Justice Little, I mean, sorry, Dr. Little.
Not doing.
Uh, student trustee Thomas, we are at, uh, item fourteen, consent agenda. Do you have any items that you want to discuss or have to?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Uh, no discussions. Nothing to.
Cool.
Nothing to pull.
Okay. You know, okay, so, uh, we have a motion, we have a second. Nothing being pulled, except for what Dr. Curry said, you know, place that on my vote.
He's coming, he's all right, he's coming.
I would say that.
We're trying to be efficient.
Yes, thank you. Say that again. Even if we sack.
I was about to say, we didn't, but, yes. For all of fourteen, so I ask, yes. That's a unanimous, yes, vote.
Thank you. Item fifteen, action items. Twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five, common college votes. Can I get a motion?
Some move, second.
Do we have any discussion, student trustee Thomas?
No discussions.
I mean, Dr. Little?
No discussion.
Trustee Doppleborn?
No discussions.
Uh, well, Yalun, no discussion, please place your online vote.
I think unanimous, yes, vote.
Item fifteen oh two, resolution number oh six dash eighteen dash twenty-twenty-four D, resolution requested more supervisors of the county of Los Angeles, California to establish tax rate for bonds of common community college district expected to be sold during fiscal year twenty-eighteen.
That's not correct, it's saying, as you need to, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth.
Twenty-four through twenty-twenty-five, authorizing necessary actions in connection therewith, can I have a motion?
So move with the correction, but second with the question.
Do we have any discussion, student trustee Thomas?
No discussions.
Dr. Little?
No discussion.
Trustee Doppleborn?
No discussion.
Trustee Yalun, no discussion, please place your online vote.
Oh, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Eighteen nineteen.
Yes.
That's a unanimous, yes, vote.
Fifteen oh three, administrative services, common community college district resolution number zero six dash eighteen dash twenty-twenty-four E, budget transfers augmentation for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four. Can I have a motion?
I make the motion.
Motion by Dr. Moore, trustee Dr. Moore?
Second.
Second by Dr. Little, do we have any discussion, trustee Thomas?
No discussions.
Dr. Little?
No discussion.
Trustee Doppleborn?
No discussions.
And I have no discussion, please place your online vote.
Dr. Curry has a yes vote.
Fifteen oh four, Administrative Services, Contracts Over Hundred and Fourteen Thousand Five Hundred. Atkinson, Anderson, Lloyd, Rudd, and Rosen. Can I have a motion?
Some move.
May I have a second? Okay. Moved by trustee Dopplemore, second by Dr. Little. Do we have any discussion? Student trustee Thomas?
No discussions.
Dr. Little?
Dr. Curry, can you just explain a little bit as to?
That's our new council.
Okay, I'm just.
So our new.
It wasn't like a special case.
No, no, this is, this is our annual contract for new.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, why?
Oh, that, oh, Dopplemore.
Oh, no, no discussion.
Did you call the question? I'm gonna raise my call question so I could say, please your online vote.
Yeah, they're not, there's no discussion.
Okay.
First and second.
No discussion. Please place your online vote.
Dr. Curry has a yes vote.
Item fifteen oh five, Administrative Services, Contracts Over Hundred and Fourteen Thousand Five Hundred. amended ratification J V C two L L C. Can I have a motion?
Some move, second.
Motion by Dr. Little, second by trustee Dopplemore. Do we have any discussion? Trustee Thomas?
No discussion.
Dr. Little?
Um, Dr. Curry, the amount on here is for just, what, thirteen months?
Yeah, it was extension. So, we had the services, we suspended the contracts, this is what this proposed. As we were hiring accountants, we still wanted to help as we trained those companies to get through. So, it's not, it's not an increase in the contract, the contract was currently awarded by the board, it's just a speak, it's just an extended time.
Trustee Dopplemore?
No discussion.
Barbara Yalun, no discussion. Please place your online vote. Okay. Item fifteen oh six, Human Resources Workplace Bases Prevention Plan.
Dr. Curry?
Yes, so, I know this is a plan that's due to the Chancellor of the Office, first twenty-four. Uh, the initial plan was, began work on by Jennifer Bichette. Uh, but then, uh, over the last month, Pam Volkerstein, Human Resources Manager, had to work on it, so I was able to fund that dollars, Pam. For finalizing the plan, moving that plan forward, which would be sent into the Chancellor's office. We've also shared a copy of the plan, it can be our open filing minutes, but then we, there's one public pay, Pam, for a long, it's possible. She's not here, but I still want to make sure we run it right out.
Well, in a minute. In a minute. Can I have a motion?
No move.
Second. Motion by Dr. Little, second by trustee Dopplemore. Do we have any discussion? Student trustee Thomas?
No discussion.
Dr. Little?
No discussion.
Trustee Dopplemore?
No discussion.
And I have no discussion. Please place your online vote.
Dr. Curry has a yes vote.
Item sixteen, discussions slash action. Dr. Curry will discuss the items and will request action if need.
Just want to provide an update on our FTS. You can see it was mentioned by, by, in, our enrollment increases. I hope that the board of trustees, right, information, I know, because this is based off of the questions that brought up regards to class modality, also regards to marketing activities, what time, how many students, services, or potential services, uh, call center reports, move our phone hub name, and also welcome to the board. So, we have enhanced this over the last year and hopeful that the board see that actually what happened in late to a moment. We're doing fairly well for the program, and I'm really impressed about the fall. Uh, the only problem, only concern I have now is that we playing for adding classes on the board. It's starting to make sure we're adding classes in specific areas. So, for example, we had an added class application, we had to find the application structure. And so, I want to make sure that in the future, as we add in some of these both the main classes, that they should be at faculty, or agile faculty available to teach them, because now we're starting to see these classes that build and provide. And so, uh, it's a good problem to have, uh, where we started some classes fill up very quickly. But there is also a bad problem, man, because you have students who are coming, the first people to school or live for classes, and those classes are not available, and that's a huge problem.
Item seventeen, grant items. Seventeen oh one, Administrative Services Grant, amended ratification, University of California Davis. Can I get a motion?
Some move, second.
Motion by Dr. Little, second by trustee Dopplemore. Do we have any discussions? Student trustee Thomas?
Um, yes, this, what, what is this grant for? It's going to University of California Davis for, for what?
So, it's, it's not a, it's a grant, part of being provided to our history in support of a research project uh, as relates to our campus, regards to our student support code on campus, through campus. And so, we're receiving the funds from their partners granting the research. Vice President John, what anything?
Yeah, so we are, um, we are raising the overhead costs, we think that our efforts and hopefully support their research initiative to find software that is going to provide for the hours for the campus, and that's also going to be part of the research, something else, for, 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 for.
Dr. Little?
No question, thank you.
Trustee Dopplemore, no discussions. Barbara Yalun, no discussion. Please place your online vote.
Dr. Curry has a yes vote.
Item eighteen, Board Policies and Administrative Regulations. Dr. Curry will discuss this item.
Just to let you know, these are updated board policies and also ministry regulations. There's no up, there's no additional information besides what's here today. I think we've been doing an outstanding job. As we start our board policies and our ministry regulations, and a lot of individuals who are involved in this, uh, that, I just, uh, Dr. Sherry Burger, who's been working as a lead, we're working with administrative assistants within my office and also with her office. We have a lot of these policies that manage our science, we have a lot of these policies as well, and that is certainly we're going to evolve in policy, we're raising the tier plus one. Uh, I think we've done an outstanding job, once again, regards to policies, and making sure that policy is updated.
Do we need, trustee, is there any questions for Dr. Curry? Do we need trustee Donald?
No questions.
Dr. Little?
No question.
Trustee Dopplemore?
No questions.
Item nineteen, information item. Dr. Curry, want to highlight some items?
I'm gonna highlight one item. Uh, item number nineteen, point zero nine, I sent an email to the campus committee and also to the board trustees regards to our accreditation report, um, and you know, what's interesting about this, and not work, I rest from this. This is the first time just we guys were able to look at other colleges' reports, uh, letters from the accreditation. I thought we had the best time. Now, if you've got a combination for the CEO, well, but just in general, we look at the colleges and the compliance issues that colleges are having. Areas that things should be, that we should be concerned about, we'd have those areas in our, in our letter. And so, you know, one, some of the things I saw was district education, programming new, uh, student learning outcome. And so, we, we have some things that we want to work on, but we look at letters of all the colleges, I thought I read the last letter, that was in that, that was sent out by the credit position. So, once again, just thank you to Dr. Sherry Burger, and also to, uh, Edward Gillis, who's our faculty accreditation chair. And, um, we have done a good job, but there's more work to be done. So, next month, we'll bring back a document for the board trustees regards to some action items from our report, and so, we'll be monitoring that over the next seven years. Our midterm report is not due till, I think it's twenty twenty-eight, Sherry, am I right? We got some time.
We got time, yeah, twenty-two.
Yes, so we have time, probably mid-year, before we get to the credit position. So, you know, it's, it's, to me, it's, 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 it's pretty amazing that, you know, we're, we've been having various accreditation for fourteen years after accreditation, and so, we're continuing to add what this, that, that story. That's all I have for that.
Item twenty, future agenda items, twenty point oh one, Calden Community College District, Lieutenant, Future Agenda Item Request. Trustee, do we have any requests for future agenda items? Student trustee Thomas?
Um, as I stated earlier, as far as, um, every table, um, even though we kind of discussed it already, I was, everyone is already aware that there was no food in every table today for any of the students. Um, and a email or a text link, it was sent out, um, hours later after, are you, food? So, I feel like there was a lack of communication, um, for the students, and then the, the message was sent out after four P M, that there's food, and there's no one on campus at four P M. So, that was kind of an issue of mine, you know, spoke about that. And then you say that you're gonna get on it, it shouldn't happen again. Um, so that was just a concern of mine, uh, for today, that this happened, so that's just.
We will follow that, the process of process.
Thank you, thank you. So, you're so hungry. And also, may I make another comment, commenting to, um, I'm sorry, Dr. Little, um, you were at stating about food, what was the food issue? Um, we all know that economy is going up, and I know that students, uh, that, who are online, they still come to campus just to eat that free meal. So, whether they're online, or you're eating, or they're in person, people are still looking for that free meal once a day. Um, why? Because everybody's hungry, you know, and if they could, if they could put more money in their pockets by eating one free meal, that helped them out, why not do so? That's kind of how I feel. That's it.
Oh, I just, um, want to thank everyone for the reports, the administration, the faculty, the staff, and obviously the students. Uh, thank the Dr. Curry for very meaningful graduation, and the leader, since this future agenda items.
Oh, sure, I thought. But no, no, no.
I appreciate you.
Not, not.
And if you want to, I was just gonna say, and that's still here, we are at oral comments. Okay, so, student trustee Thomas gave her oral comments. We have moved on, all right? Student trustee Thomas gave her oral comments. It's, it's okay. It's okay. Sometimes I get confused on this agenda also, don't feel bad. It wasn't about future agenda, but I went on that for seven years.
And I followed from that.
So, we all together, because I was gonna tell Dr. More to give me her comment, and so I could do mine, and we can leave.
Well, go back to future agenda items, Dr. Curry. I have none. You have none.
I have none.
You have none, Dr. Curry, you have three.
So, Dr. Curry, have this agenda, okay? So, Dr. Curry, okay, so, we've been, we've been none, 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 none. Reprentation, none, none, none. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm the one I can silly, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
I, I want to say, uh, commencement, all I can say is wow. Thank you for participating in board trustees and commencement ceremony. So, thanks to the faculty, top five professors, and the resident supervisors, and most supportive students for their participation. Thank you, Heather, and the rest, for all the work that you have done on commencement over the years. Next year, commencement is scheduled for June thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, at Bigamy Health, and it starts at six five P M. Please mark your calendars. And don't expect special guests.
You have to stop, you're like, you're like, you're like. Oh, yeah, you gonna have, you gonna have to up that. That's right, you never know.
I said, no respect.
You gonna have to up one now. You got to go higher.
And on the higher. We just go on a console now, too.
Okay, uh, summer session, advice of the beginning of the day, romance, please. Please note some passes to the table, both the second, since we said should be as much buying first to the twenty-four. I also want to say thank you to for approving the budget, and over the next couple of months, we'll be making adjustments to the budget to the final, uh, September, board of trustees. We will also continue to monitor the state budget as we report, and that's the part one.
Dr. Little?
You want to say what you said again, or, or, I mean, your report, your report, um, you might have other things to say. No, that was good, about, uh, farmers market, and, um, you guys did a great job, um, you guys all looked beautiful, I gratified Shannon. And thank you for having me, thanks for being nice and polite, and warm welcome.
Thank you.
It's only nice that it's not.
Wait for the end of the year.
Dr. Little?
Okay.
Thank you again, everything I said pretty usefully to everyone, um, to Dr. Curry, to all my students, I was really moved. Um, and the trustees, when we joined graduation, we were able to greet, um, graduates, and one young lady came, and she put her hand into the picture, and she said, oh, that's my mom behind me. And that was so moving to me, I shared, you know, after family and friends about the mother and the daughter coming through together, and to me, that's what community policy, Calden Community Policy exemplifies, is family and generation. And, um, I would hope that we continue to tell our own story about admissions, about all these wonderful programs. I don't care, I don't think nobody else is doing it like us. And I just, you know, really commend every one who joins together.
Thank you.
Yes, um, yes, it was, um, an honor and a privilege to attend, I tried to attend as many of the end of the year celebrations um, as possible. It was just great seeing the families to come out and support the students and just to help, um, support and lift, making graduate the students as they, um, are graduating and transitioning on to their next, uh, the next chapter of the journey. Um, and also, it was, um, also very much, um, um, I was very much surprised and it warmed my heart to see, um, Compton and the sponsor and tabling the Juneteenth event celebration on Saturday in the city of Long Beach, so, uh, that was a, um, a good moment for me, being able to attend and see our students there, interacting with the community, um, in my, uh, in my city of Des Moines, so. That was, um, um, that was really good. And I'm looking forward to, um, the summer session. May the force be with everyone who's taking now.
Okay, war is a force. Bargaining, touching paint workshops, calculator.
Yeah.
So, we had a table at a June day, that I didn't know.
Who were sponsored against that?
We were. Then did you go? We were the sponsor.
I wouldn't know why to be in front.
Keep it advertising from a lot of different places. People would like to know when things are, I'd like.
With limitation.
Not really. I would say that's with Dr. Curry. No, that, uh, June, I couldn't have gone, I couldn't go anywhere, but listen, real fast, um, registration is now open for the twenty twenty-four student trustee workshop. It's gonna be, you know about it?
Yes.
Okay, let me be wide, you know about it.
For first.
You registered, okay. Um, and then there's the C E O Leadership Academy, but you don't even go, because this is what you kind of want to do. If you decide, you know. If any. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, um. If any board member wants to be on the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five advisory commission, applicants, and know the league has three advisory committees, you know, so you could go on the league website and, uh, you're just wired through July thirty-first to join the advisory committee on education services, which is ACES. The C E O Strategic Leadership Program, which is called C S L P, advisory commission, or the advisory committee on legislation, A C L. The guidelines are, you can go on their website, you can find it. I had a wonderful time at the graduation. I met three more Calhouns. They all sat in.
Other barber Calhouns?
I surely did, they, and what made it easy for me, they were all in the front row. All three of them were in the front row. Two was on this side, and one was on the other side. And that big section that was over on this side was all Calhouns. When we were on the stage, when we looked out at that section right there, everybody in that long old row was Calhouns. Yeah, big family, big family. And then I met a young man that's Calhoun here. And, uh, we were talking, and we're semi-religious, so we gonna talk some more about our victims. So we gonna talk some more about our relatives. But I had a good time. Chin didn't let mom. Yes. My man, did you see him give me that hug? I love it. But anyway, uh, I'm not gonna hold this up. You've been here for a while, and just, Dr. Little, please give us the name of the person that you would like was.
Ruben Adams.
Oh, Ruben Adams.
Barbara Lee, Addo. Addo McCadus the third.
The cat, uh, two D.
A B B E L K A B E R the third.
That's, uh, I miss two D, and he was.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. That was it. And, um. That's it.
That was the end of the agenda, sorry.
No, it's, it's, we done.
Yes.
Okay, this meeting is over at eight thirty-five. Dr. Curry.